Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 3, 2013, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. We have two items on the consent agenda tonight. Briefly, they are: mandatory referral for sanitary sewer easement, relocation to serve the proposed development to be located at 2012 Memorial Boulevard, Walmart Real Estate Business is the applicant. And the next one is a mandatory referral for a partial waiver of aviation easement, and for an additional aggravation? How do you pronounce that?
Aviation.
Aviation, thank you. I didn't go to UT. Easement to construct a fence on the property located along Harold Lane, Jim and Janice Bellamy are the applicants. Is anybody on the Planning Commission, anybody in tonight's audience, or any member of the staff, like either of these items removed from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move proposal to consent agenda.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next portion of our agenda is public hearings. We have seven public hearings scheduled for this evening, the first of which is a zoning application for approximately 9.62 acres located along Memorial Boulevard to be rezoned from RS-15, 6.86 acres, and residential duplex, 2.76 acres, to commercial highway, Don Irwin and Diane Harper are the applicants. Ms. Ealy?
Thank you, sir. Our first public hearing this evening is to consider changing the zone for properties located along the east side of Highway 231 or Memorial Boulevard. These properties are currently zoned both RS-15, Single Family Residential District, and RD, Residential Duplex District. Four of the lots are zoned RD, Residential Duplex, and they're shown on the map. These are the four lots for which the property owner has requested a zoning change. The properties to the south, which are also shaded blue, consist of nine lots and are zoned RS-15, and are each developed with a single-family structure. Those parcels were included as additional study area by the Planning Commission to study a larger area before making your determination which properties should be zoned. The change that is being considered this evening is to change the zone for the RD properties and RS-15 properties to CH, Commercial Highway District. The total area is 9.62 acres, with 2.76 acres of it being zoned RD, and 6.86 acres being zoned RS-15. The property is directly across from the post office and the new Bojangles fast food restaurant, and it's north of the site that has been approved for a Walmart supercenter. The city's fire station is contiguous with this area that we're studying, and there's Sportscom's located adjacent to this property. You can see the letter P, which is the zoning for Park, is the location of Sportscom and of the airport, and that's also what's located to the north of the study area. Irongate Boulevard is nearby, and just north of Irongate Boulevard is Kroger Shopping Center with those out parcels. During our March 6 meeting tonight, or during that meeting, you decided to study this larger area, so the public hearing we're going to be holding today will be to consider zoning all of these parcels to CH, Commercial Highway District. If they are zoned CH, the development standards for CH will apply, meaning they will have to construct a buffer contiguous with that property zoned P, those properties zoned Park, and that type of buffer will be at least 12 feet in width, and will have a dense mass of evergreen plantings. The Planning Commission should conduct the public hearing prior to making any recommendations to City Council. Staffs available to answer any questions you may have either before or after the public hearing.
Ms. Ealy, you said if they are approved, they would have to have the buffer, but that would not be until it was developed for commercial purposes, though, right?
That's right. That will only come into play when there's a change of use on the plan.
Okay.
When it remains single-family, they can just continue to occupy.
Just make that stipulation. Any questions for the staff? Does the developer have a representative, or does the applicant have anything they'd like to say before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission, I'm John Harney, and I'm here representing the owners tonight. Mr. Don Irwin is also here as well, and they are the owners of the four duplex lots that are at what I call the northern end of this request. They respectfully ask for this to be rented zone, Commercial Highway. It backs up to Sportscom, as Ms. Ealy has said, and also looks directly across the street at mainly Commercial across the street being Bojangles, Post Office area and all that, so we think it's an appropriate rezoning to occur. All utilities are there. They're perfectly fine with the required landscape easement at what time that property develops, and certainly glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Harney at this time? Thank you, Mr. Harney.
Thank you.
Before I open the public hearing, let me briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against this proposal. If you do want to speak, just come to the microphone, state your name, and give your address, please. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes, because we have quite a few people that might like to speak on various public hearings tonight. I'll make all your comments or questions to the Planning Commission. If you do have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions and try to answer them at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Chairman Lamb, members of the Commission, my name is Leslie White. I represent the four single-family residences on the south end of the study area. They are comprised of 2034 Memorial Boulevard, owned by Mr. Ronald Page, 2038 Memorial, owned by Mrs. Carol Bailey, 2110 Memorial, owned by Mr. A.E. Low, and 2118 Memorial, owned by Mr. Charles McKnight. These properties, in fact, all of these single-family residences were constructed in the late 50s, early 60s, when the road out there was still called Lebanon Pike, and it was two-lane. Currently, that road is now five lanes, called Memorial, and it carries about 30,000 cars a day in terms of traffic. Retail activity has crept north almost to these sites. North of the property is the Sportscom, McKnight Park property. It has like 180,000 visits a day. The State Farm is located north of there. They have about 1,700 employees, and we've got Seagull Schools up there. I think they've got about 3,000 students currently. So I think it's relatively obvious that the nature of the subdivision has changed, and probably is now, the highest and best use is now commercial development. In addition, the new supercenter, 180,000 square feet, is slated for development this year, just south of this property, and the property across the street is in the process of being zoned commercial. Three of the four property owners are here tonight, and they will speak their mind. The fourth, Mr. A.E. Low, was not able to attend. He's given me a letter saying, given me authority to request that his property be zoned commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Who's next?
How y'all doing this evening? I'm Jim McKnight. My sister and I own the property at 2210 Memorial, which is right next to the Irwin's property that wants to be zoned, and we are for the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight.
My name is Ronnie Page, and I own the property at 2034 Memorial Boulevard, which is actually next door to the Walmart store. Mine is the first lot. When people are against any commercial rezoning, the first objection that comes up is increase in traffic. The increase in traffic is the main reason I'm for this zoning change. The driveway to my property is next to the proposed north entrance to the Walmart. People who are looking to rent a home do not look for one where they will have to fight Walmart traffic to get in and out of their driveway. With the red light and the turn lanes into the Walmart, it will be impossible to turn left from my driveway, and turning right will also be very hard to do. Getting in will be even harder. Going south, the only way to get is to get into the turn lane of the Walmart, hold up traffic, trying to turn into, holding up traffic trying to turn into the store, and cut across two lanes of traffic. Going north on Memorial Boulevard, it will be even more dangerous. As soon as the traffic, at the traffic light begins to move, I will have to stop traffic to turn into my driveway. The income from this property is a very important part of my retirement income. The presence of the Walmart makes it unrentable. At present, it is not rented, and I have no one interested in doing so. The only way that I can realize the value of my profit is to sell it. Everyone here knows that the value of commercial property is considerably more than residential property. With the commercial development along Memorial Boulevard, it is only common sense that it be rezoned along with all the property from the Walmart site to the Sportscom. These are the reasons that I am completely for this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Chairman Lamb and counsel, I'm Charles McKnight. I own the property at 2118 Memorial Boulevard, and I wholeheartedly am in favor of this zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight. Anybody else?
I'm Marcia Fulcher. I'm an affiliate broker with Reliant Realty, 640 Broadmoor, here in Murfreesboro, and I am representing Carol Bailey, who resides at 2038 Memorial Boulevard, in the potential sale of her property. She's unable to be here this evening, but she's given me a statement. She would like me to read, if I may. "I have lived on Memorial Boulevard for 45 years. As the years have passed, I've seen a quiet two-lane street change into a four-lane highway, and a cornfield in the back of my home turn into a soccer field. In the near future, a Walmart will be two doors down from me. Memorial has been a wonderful place to live, but it's time for a change, especially with commercial properties going all around. The quiet two-lane is no more. For this reason, I truly hope that my property can be rezoned to commercial highway so that I can go forward with the sale of my home, and once again, live on a quiet, two-lane residential road." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fulcher. Anybody else?
Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission, I'm Kathy Nobles, and I live at 1447 Abilene Circle. My husband and I own 2206 Memorial, which is right across the street from the post office and Kroger and the shopping center there. We too feel like it's time for a change. We have trouble renting the house because of that. People don't want to live there because of the traffic, and it's just not suited any longer for residential. We feel like it's better suited for commercial, and we would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nobles. Anybody else? All done? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adelai, do you have any comments?
No, sir, but if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay. Any questions for the staff? Any comments? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, if there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next public hearing will be a zoning application for approximately 39.8 acres along Manson Pike to be rezoned from RS-15, approximately 35.51 acres, and Commercial Highway, approximately 4.29 acres, to RM-16, Mr. Charles and Mr. Jeffrey Smotherman are the applicants. Ms. Ealy?
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is to consider changing the zone for four parcels located along the southern side of Manson Pike. They're located just north of Puckett Creek and along Overall Creek. These properties, again, are located on the south side of Manson Pike, and they are primarily undeveloped. There is one unoccupied, single-family dwelling on the property, which I do not believe anybody's lived in for several years. The owners have requested that these properties be rezoned to RM-16, Residential Multifamily District, in order to better market the properties. The three of the tracks are currently zoned, RS-15, which is Single Family Residential District, and the fourth track is zoned CL, Local Commercial District. These properties are zoned CL and RS-15 as an interim zoning from when they were annexed. There was no companion zoning change request, so our zoning ordinance required that they be zoned RS-15 and CL, which is why we call it an interim zoning. The property to the east across Overall Creek is zoned RM-16, Multifamily Residential District, and is currently being constructed as Integra Creek Apartments, and if you've drove by, you've probably seen that property under development. The property to the south side is zoned PRD, Plain Residential District, and is also developing Single Family Residential Subdivision. That's Puckett Station, and it's one of the subdivisions in Murfreesboro, which we continue to see increasing permits and action, or I say increasing action, but increasing permits and requests for permits for. The property to the, contiguous with the subject area to the west is zoned RS-15 and is partially a developed, single-family subdivision that was developed in the county but annexed with the city as October of 2010. The property to the north includes what I believe used to be a part of MTSU's Dairy Farm. The entire property is located in the Blackman Land Use Study Area, and that study does indicate that these properties should be used for high-density and commercial purposes. It appears that the zoning request by the landowner is consistent with that zoning plan, as they have requested an RM-16 zone. The three eastern parcels are also located in the Gateway Design Overlay District, and as Planning Commission, you're very familiar with what that entails. It does require a higher quality of development in our community. I think it's something that we're all very proud of, and when we see development in the gateway, it's something we're proud of. Of course, having that GDO overlay zone on this base zone, which is not changing, will guarantee that the property will be developed at a higher standard. It's also important to note that a significant portion of this property is affected by both the floodway and the floodplain. It appears that about, or approximately 20 acres of the land area is located within the floodway, and the floodway is where we expect water to, expect to be inundated with water on a fairly routine area in which we don't allow development, so that 20 acres would be restricted from having any type of development. It appears that approximately 16 acres of the property are in the floodplain, and we do see development in the floodplain, so long as it complies with our zoning ordinance and those FEMA regulations, which we have, the community has adopted. But it is significant and does take up a large portion of the property, so I wanted to be sure to point that out to you. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation on this zoning change request and forwarding that recommendation to council. Staff will be glad to answer any questions you may have either before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for staff at this time? Does the applicant or representative of the applicant have a statement to make before we open the public hearing?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman Lamb and Commissioners. I'm simply here on behalf of the applicant. Bill Huddleston could not join us this evening due to illness in the family, but I will be here to answer questions if you do have them.
That being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak.
Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, I'm Larry Sims of Sims Olters Auctioneers. I've been fortunate to be working on this property since 2005 with the Smotherman family. We've seen a lot of changes out there, and I think what's happening up until now with the widening of Manson Pike and interchange and Medical Center Parkway, and then the development of apartments next to this property has kind of come to light. We've been working closely with Joseph Adelai, Planting Director, also with Bill Huddleston, and we've actually looked at some people who's interested in development, so we think we've come up with a good use for this piece of property. It has some special uses and needs, and it's really going to be a terrific piece of property, even though it does a lot of it's in the floodway and flood area, so we think we can work with them and make a special project out of it. If you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Who would like to be next?
My name is Gregory Phillips. I reside at 3868 Andrea Brook Court. My home, and in fact, my backyard, is adjacent to and directly to the west of the subject property proposed for rezoning. I'm here tonight to urge you to recommend this rezoning request for disapproval and to not forward it to the City Council. The comments earlier from the Commission regarding this application state that this rezoning request is being made so that the owners can better market the property, assuming that if this property was zoned for multifamily units, then it would open it up to more potential buyers. My response to that is that the owner should consider hiring better firms to market their property. I'm not sure how long the subject property has been on the market, but my wife and I bought our home in March of 2012, and there was a for-sale sign on the property then. Before purchasing our home, we made several inquiries to Red Realty, the listing agency at the time, about the subject property. We wanted to know how many acres were for sale, the total price, and if owners would be willing to divide the land. We got no response from Red Realty. Over the course of the next year, we made contact with Red Realty to inquire about purchasing some of the land behind our home, and again, never got a response. Just this past weekend, a new sign was placed on the property with a different real estate company. The sign even says that the owners would divide. Excited about the possibility of being able to purchase some of the land, I called Sims Realty several times this week. I still have not gotten a response from anyone to call me back regards to purchasing some of the land. The property never appealed on Red Realty's website, and is currently listed on Sims Realty website. In addition, you can't find it listed on popular real estate sites such as Zillow.com, Trulia.com, Realtor.com, et cetera. The only way anyone would know that it was for sale would be to drive by and call the company to get additional information. Good luck with that. So my first argument would be that the owners need to find someone who would better market their property before this commission actively considers rezoning the property. Secondly, I would like to go back to the comments regarding the rezoning meeting, because it mentions the Blackman Land Use Study. I would like to use the study as the basis for my next arguments. Since several members of the Commission were instrumental in the study, I'm sure the Commission is aware of how it's to be used as a guide for land use in the Blackman community. As I read every word of the study, there were several common themes throughout. One of those themes was preserving sensitive areas of land, and the other was to find a balance between existing land use and proposed changes. For reference, I would like to note Chapter 3.2, Section A, under Environmental Unique Features and Goals. It states, "To promote the preservation of central, sensitive natural areas within the study area, including areas prone to flooding and areas containing karst features and topography." Another section states, under Things to Avoid When Developing Land to Blackman, particularly to avoid, and this is listed, disturbing areas adjacent to floodplains, stream buffer areas, or wetlands. I would like to point out that more than 50% of the property is located within the floodway, where no structures are permitted, and approximately 80% of the remaining land is located within the 100-year floodplain. To further my point of the theme about developing land to adjacent areas, it also states densities of new residential developments should be compatible with existing adjoining residential areas, and a buffer will be provided when there is a significant difference in densities. These are only a couple of the examples, but again, the themes of preserving sensitive flood areas and areas along with new developments are compatible with existing adjacent areas are common throughout the 160-page study. Some other very important points to consider before recommending the subject property for rezoning. How will the development of the land affect homes adjacent to the property, namely blasting effects on foundations? How does runoff affect the adjacent properties? I don't want a lake in my backyard. All three Blackman schools are currently overcapacity. Adding a multifamily dwelling will severely negatively impact those schools. Multifamily dwellings usually bring an increase in crime. As a matter of fact, the new Integra Creek Apartments has at least one registered sex offender. I personally don't want people looking down into my backyard as my children play. In closing, let me, I'd like to make sure there are many people that would love to build a single-family home in the Blackman area. In closing, I'd just like to read one last thing from the Blackman Land Use Study. "It is extremely important to view developments in terms of their impact on the broader community. Development proposals should be evaluated not only in terms of their impact on surrounding properties, but also on the basis of their potential impact on the land use and infrastructure plans of the overall Blackman community." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Hello, my name is Robyn McNeely, and I live at 3875 Andrea Brook Court, and I'm also representing my mother, who lives at 3885 Andrea Brook Court, in the Butler Manor subdivision, adjacent to, sharing a property line with the questioned area. And I have several comments, actually, about this, so I support everything my neighbor just said, and I won't repeat any of that. I just spent the last three months, give or take, fighting with the school board, the Rutherford County School Board, to keep my children zoned in the Blackman Elementary Schools. It was a long, hard fight, and one of the reasons we had this fight was because of the Integra Creek apartment complex, which are nice and all, but it added so many kids, and it's adding so many kids to the Blackman school zone, that we are now having trouble with the schools being overcrowded. Now, I won this fight, but my school board very nicely told me that if they build an apartment complex in this property, then we're probably going to get rezoned to a school five miles down the road, and very much unhappiness is going to happen. My neighbor talked to you about not wanting to have a lake in his backyard. Now, he's only lived here for about a year. I have lived there since I was 15, so 21 years, and at least every couple of years, when we get some hard rains, and I'm not even going to talk about just the May flood, this neighborhood where my house is, it floods. The backyard floods, and all the water goes into the property that is up for sale. If we have building on there, and Mr. Sims has already indicated, at least according to the newspaper, that he was going to try and get the floodplains changed, he's going to work with the Corps of Engineer to get that tweaked, my house now becomes a risk. I already paid flood insurance, but I really kind of hoped to never actually have to use it, because somebody felt that they needed to build apartments on land that really it doesn't need it. And I do want to address one little concern I've had, and maybe y'all could clear this up. There is actually already for-sale signs that indicate it has already been rezoned to multifamily, and if you need it, I took a picture of it on my way here this afternoon. So I'm a little concerned about that, because it seems to imply that it's, the decision has already been made, but I'm, since we're here, I'm assuming it has not. So we have flooding concerns. We have overcrowding in schools. There's also, we don't really have the infrastructure out there. I know we talk about it's three lanes, and it's wonderful, and it's fabulous, but I can tell you, last week, and at least once a week, I see the traffic backed up from the light at Fortress, past my neighborhood, and that's somewhere about a half a mile long, where we're waiting for traffic. If you add another 350 to 600 apartments, because depending on who you talk to, that's what they're talking about, the traffic is going to be unbearable, and I would, cannot imagine trying to get out of my little neighborhood of 13 homes. So with those three things, the last thing I want to talk about is that land has been unused for 20 years, and there's a lot of animals that live out there, and I know that's probably not important to most people, but my kids like seeing the deer come in our backyard. Nobody mows it, nobody takes care of it, nobody's done anything with it for at least 10 years to stop mowing it, Lord only knows why. But I do want to consider all of those things. So I want us to consider overcrowding in the Blackman schools. I'd like us to consider the flooding potential in my home, my neighbor's homes, and I'd like us to also consider the infrastructure is not quite ready for another 300 to 600 homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
My name's Jeff Rainwater. I live at 1030 Brinkston Run. That is in Puckett Station, which is the subdivision, it's just to the south of the subject properties, and I'd like to speak against this rezoning. The main reason is, right now, in the Blackman community right now, we've seen some very rapid development of high, extremely high densities. We know that with the interchange there with interstate, we're going to have We know that with the interchange there with interstate, we're going to have some of that, and even with the land use study, it says that this is appropriate. What we would ask is, that it says it's appropriate for both commercial and extremely high-density use, well, we need some of the both mixed in there, not an apartment complex on every piece of property as you approach the interstate there. Like the lady before me, I've spent the last three weeks trying to stay zoned to the Blackman School District, and when you put an apartment complex like that at a school that's already 150 students to 200 students over capacity, you're looking at adding another 100 students based on the numbers that we've discussed for the last three weeks with the school board. So, once again, if you build another apartment complex and market it for this use right now, you're looking at a very overcrowding of the schools. There is another school coming online that should help some of that, but there again, we could be looking at it full and open. So the, the other thing about it is, to make, you know, these properties work with some of these, we already have Integra Creek that over, that looks over our neighborhood, that's, you know, 35, 40 feet tall, higher than what it really should have been built in the first place. They got a zoning variance, I think, on that one. But what we don't want is another one right next to it, overshadowing our neighborhood to where we're completely ringed by apartments. We have, this, this will make apartment complex number three adjacent to our community. We also have 250 townhouses. The area is owned going into the Puckett Station subdivision, is zoned for townhouses. Across Fortress has a very high density of townhouses and high density, there's another apartment complex on the other side of Blackman School. This is all within about half a mile. So I would say we need to, you know, take a step back and, and look at, you know, how many, how many we should have and how quickly we should build out all that as we look at what the mix of those properties should be, and, and not build, not, not ring the whole area with apartment complexes around the existing, existing neighborhoods that are already there. The last thing I'd like to say is, the area around there has significant issues with water when it rains, just about everywhere around the creek there, and it would, great concern would be our neighborhood, we'd get a very bad name for being the flooding neighborhood if you start shoving more water down our way, especially if, like he said in the paper today, they can get some changes made to the floodway. So I would request that you not make a recommendation for this to be approved for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rainwater. Anybody else?
My name is Elijah Mentor. I live at 4340 Pretoria Run, immediately south of the property in question. Echoing the same comments my neighbors mentioned, we have spent the last several months with the school board. The flooding issue is obviously a concern because I'm immediately to the south. If there were to change, any of the drains is too much, we need to start seeing it in my backyard as well. The big thing is the school board issue and, and the overcrowding. Even on a conservative estimate, you're essentially doubling the overcrowding tonight if we recommend this rezoning. We, my daughter's two years old, so she's not immediately affected by the school rezoning that we did the last three months, but by doing this over the next few years, you will impact her and all the other kids that are sitting in a portable classroom right now. You're essentially putting them back into a portable classroom, even in the new school that we just built. I'm sure that we'll run the numbers and all that and be able to confirm it or deny that, but essentially, that's what we're doing. We're making the problem worse. So my question is, what would the, what would the owner be willing to contribute to funding a, the new school that they're going to be causing if we ended up making this a multifamily zone? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so close the public hearing. Mr. Aidot, the Blackman Land Use Study was brought up. Can you comment on the Blackman Land Use Study and what it called for on this property?
Yes, sir, I can. And frankly, I was very impressed with Mr. Phillips. He obviously read the study. It's available on our website. We keep it there so that people who are interested in it can take a look at it and review it along with us. We worked on the study back in the late 90s. We spent a lot of effort visioning for the Blackman area. Part of it was the written part, part of it dealt with traffic management, part of it dealt with lofty goals about how we wanted to see the, the community developed. We also prepared a future land use map that was to help guide zoning decisions. The land use map was very, very clear. For this property, particularly the southern part, it showed high-density residential. High-density residential being defined as upwards of 16 units per acre, that's being an acceptable density. The frontage, the part that's against the Manson Pike, was shown to be a commercial use. In actuality, that was a, a point of quite a bit of discussion with the county plan commission, because originally the county plan commission, actually, the originally, the city's original drafts of the map had included high-density residential for the entire tract, and the only change to the map was a request by the county to have a portion of it to be commercial. And that was a sort of compromise between a, the city's plan commission and the county's plan commission when we met in joint session to jointly adopt the, the plan. A couple of things about this property, I do want, I do want to talk about this drainage. The drainage is a, a very sensitive element out there, and I say that because a very, even a very casual review of the flood maps shows that a very significant part of this property is affected by the floodway and by the 100-year flood. In fact, only a relatively small amount of the land is outside the 100-year flood. One of the maps that we have in the agenda materials, and if Ms. Ely will put it on the television, I kind of want to go over with you so that you can see what I'm seeing. The land that is the subject area is brown and bright red and orange as it fronts the Manson Pike. The area that's colored bright red is floodway. The flood insurance rate maps that are provided by FEMA shows that area to be floodway. The significance is, in the floodway, you cannot develop any in a way that will displace floodwaters. It's got to remain open, it's got to remain available to convey floodwaters. It's a certain amount of volume. The area that's brown on that map is the 100-year flood. The significance there is, yes, you can develop in that area, you can build homes, you can build apartments if the zoning permits it, you can build commercial uses if the zoning permits it, but you have to elevate the property so that the floor elevation for residential is one foot above the base flood elevation. Right off, I don't know what that elevation is, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the maps because every point along the river may be a little bit different, or along the creek. The commercial would have to be at or above. For residential, it's one foot above. The floodplain will allow great, will allow reshaping of the land. Now, part of what you don't see on this map, and part of what is standard operating procedure, is our stormwater ordinance in the Mercer City Code, and it requires that there be an area along the creeks that are, what we call it, the WQPA, the Water Quality Protection Area. A 50-foot wide strip along the bank on each side of the river that we, we try to keep it undisturbed. We want the vegetation to remain intact. We don't want it bulldozed down. We want that area to basically be able to withstand erosion. We don't want it washed away. That's the Water Quality Protection Area. It would be contained completely within the floodway. We don't measure that from the floodway line, we measure that from the stream bank. One of the things that's a little bit unusual about this property is, it's right there at the mouth with Puckett Creek. So I think that may, in some respects, complicate the, the model that FEMA uses to calculate the flood maps. Now, there was an interesting discussion about preserving these areas. One of the advantages for the property owner from a multifamily standpoint is the ability to cluster density out of it. You, in RM16 zone, you can move your units to the high ground and concentrate your efforts in the area where you can fill, where you can develop, and stay out of the floodway. That is one of the advantages for that zoning for this property. And I think that someone looking at that property would look at that. Those type of areas often are more recreation areas, set aside areas. They just don't try to get in there and bulldoze them because there's no advantages to them. In fact, there's penalties to them. When they disturb those lands, they have to go back in and stabilize them, re-vegetate them, so, and re-landscape it. So from a, from a drainage standpoint, the city's regulations are going to try to maintain a neutral impact. We don't want to see the floodplain or the neighboring properties affected by it. In fact, our stormwater regulations are going to require that a, a certain amount of the drainage be detained on site to avoid flooding, and that's part of our, our standard operating procedures. With regards to the schools, I don't know, I don't know what percentage of students reside in apartments. It changes from time to time, different market apartments have different student ratios. I don't know how many students reside in the Integra Creek there just now finished those apartments. I don't think they're fully occupied. I couldn't, I couldn't go over there and get a really good head count today because I probably, until they get it full, they probably won't have a good head count on the students. I don't know what that impact is going to be in this property as well. Are there any specific questions you guys want me to maybe address?
Just a couple of points Mr. Phillips brought up that I don't think you touched on was buffering and blasting.
Well, blasting is something that is regulated by the state. We, we have found, a long time ago, we can't do much about blasting, but it's inherent with every development. Blasting is something that happens in Tennessee, whether, whether, or in the middle, in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, with almost every development, and every development comes along will have some blasting associated with it. But we do urge people, when they observe problems associated with blasting, to contact the fire marshal promptly because they, the fire marshal can do something about it if it's a problem.
Mr. Aidot?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't, if a company's going to do blasting, wouldn't you have a pre-survey and a post-survey?
Yes, they do. They will, if they're going to be doing blasting within a certain area in proximity to it, they will do a pre-blast survey, and if there are any claims, they can, they can use that to confirm whether or not there was a problem. I often find those debates-
Who would a resident go to to make sure that that happens?
Well, that'd be the, the insurance carrier for the contractor is typically the one who wants to have that done, so be the contractor. We may have, Mr. Gilly, you look like you may have some knowledge about torments, I don't know, but, and Mr. Huddleston, you may have some knowledge about how to address that, but I know that the fire marshal is the people we, we direct people to first.
Okay. Okay, and buffering, Mr. Aidot?
This is a, as RM16, we will require that there be a buffer. This would be a Type C buffer, I believe, adjacent to residential. That can also involve the placement of buildings, how they're oriented. We don't want to have long, tall buildings immediately adjacent to a property line run parallel with it, so to have additional setbacks in those instances. We would review a site plan, and we can look at things like headlights, how they shine onto adjacent properties. We can look at how the parking lots are oriented, et cetera, solid waste elements, those kind of things. That's part of site plan review, and that's part of what we do when we meet with developers and design teams about how to develop property.
So whether it was, whether it was developed as commercial or multifamily or whatever, the buffering and the drainage is considered at the site plan review? Anybody else have questions for Mr. Aidot? Alberd?
Mr. Aidot, this may not be a fair question, but based upon the usable number of acres in, assuming that the floodway stays as it is right now, what would be the prospective density or the number of units that could be placed on this property, or is that a fair question, not knowing how the site plan would eventually come out?
It's an, all I can provide you would be an uncertain answer. Let me give you a density range. If the property were all developable with no limitations by the flooding or the floodway or buffers, we're looking at somewhere around 640 dwelling units on that amount of acreage zoned RM16. With this amount of floodplain, this amount of floodway, I would think half of that would be optimistic.
300 units, maybe?
Maybe. I think, I think 320 would be an optimistic calculation, because what happens is, they are limited to three-story buildings. They are limited, and that, right there, limits the height that they can go up, even on the best land. We're still going to require landscaping, islands in the parking lot, every 12 spaces around the perimeter. We're going to require setbacks from property lines, so all those are going to reduce the density, I'd say, in a half, easy, and that's, and that's, that would be an optimistic number for a developer looking at it.
So, I mean, cars, if it's on an optimistic, 320 units, about how much per unit is the average car? Two cars, three cars?
It will vary, depending upon the market. If we were looking at something that'd be around MTSU, and this is not, we'd probably be looking at something much higher. Something of this nature, we're probably looking at a lot of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, with, with a small percentage that'd be three-bedroom. That's typically what Integra Creek is. So we're probably looking at about two cars per unit.
Three kind of cars?
Average.
So, Mr. Aidot, we're talking about commercial. Is it feasible to say it's not good to have a commercial, I mean, anything, commercial property on that site? Depends on how it's structured or how it's built?
Would you answer that question again? I'm not sure I understood exactly what you asked.
Restaurant or any other type of commercial?
Any kind of a commercial development on that property would probably be limited closer to the front because of the cost of developing the floodplain, if it were zoned commercial. A portion of the property, if you'll notice, one of the parcels, the easternmost, is still going to remain commercial local. It was zoned commercial in the county before its annexation. I think there is a, maybe a structure on that part of the property. It's, it's probably going to be a, a single-use type of arrangement if it's developed commercial. Frankly, I expect on these days we'll see an application to see it zoned, but the family circumstances won't allow it to be part of the application today.
Mr. Alberd, did you have another question?
Just to follow up on Mr. Clark's comment, and again, this, this getting the cart before the horse. Based upon the number of cars and then the comment that the lady made about the backup of the traffic, us, if we were to approve this, would we at site plan look at what road improvements would need to be made with respects to people turning in and out of here or trying to turn into this project?
We absolutely would.
Okay.
And it may well be that we need to have a right-turn lane, which is not at all uncommon for that to be required for a, for a complex. Roadway improvements, that's just part of developing a multifamily campus.
Thank you.
Mr. Aidot, in the Blackman Land Use Study was done in 98?
Yes, at that time, Frank. Yes, sir.
So almost 15 years ago, this property was identified as high-density multifamily property?
Yes, sir.
That's a pretty good guess, isn't it?
Well, to be, also to elaborate a little bit on that, when the Smothers came to visit me and talk about the development plans they had, first thing I looked at was the Blackman Landing Study as a resource to, to give them guidance. They were participants in the process, they, they attended public hearings. They, they felt commercial was a better use for the property back at that time, but I think they have come to conclude that maybe a multifamily use is, is, is better. But the first thing I pull out when I deal with property owners in the Blackman area who want to talk about development is the Blackman Land Use Study, because it's the best guidance I have available.
I believe Mrs. Jones represented the planning commission on the committee that came up with that study. Ms. Jones, did you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, not specifically related to that, but yes, I, yes, I did, and I remember very well all those meetings. That was my first year on the planning commission.
That's why you got stuck in there.
That was my pride. Just in general, Mr. Aidot, you know, when we're looking at annexing property, we get information or talk to the school board, you know, of course, we talk to everybody, but we do, we do find out information from the school board about how it's going to affect and whether they can handle that annexation when we're bringing new property in. Do we ever look at anything like that when we're just zoning? And I guess I'm really asking, in this case, and with the multifamily... And I guess I'm really asking, in this case, and with the multifamily, because of, we hear in the, in the news right now that, you know, like, many of our children will probably live in apartments and rent where, prior to 2007, many of them probably would not have, that we will have many more renters in years to come than we have in the past. So is that something that we should try to look at as the city to determine areas or an overall density for an area? You know, yes, we're looking at this particular tract, and yes, it can probably handle the RM16, but as I pointed out, you know, we've got lots of our, you know, multifamily all around in this area, you know? Do we need to consider larger areas when we're considering adding apartment complexes?
Well, that's a, yes, ma'am, the answer is, is yes, we should.
But we don't have a way to do that, right?
But, but I will, I will caution you this. When the Blackman Landing Study was prepared, the, the school board did participate. They had, they had a member who was on the board.
And we were looking at a very large area.
And we were trying to calibrate and figure. I think there was a recognition, even at that time, that the Blackman area that we were studying, that we call Blackman, was going to grow to have more students than the Blackman schools would have capacity to, to accommodate, and that there would have to be additional schools constructed. And that was one of the takeaways that the school board received with, with the study, that they need to be prepared to be responsive to the growth that was coming to the Blackman area, and that there was going to be continued growth, and it would be calibrated around the interchange, it would be of a higher intensity. Now, I have not reached out to them recently to see what their, their current models are, and there has been changes in their staffing, there's changes in their personnel, there may have been changes in their, in their thoughts. Often I find that if the, the school board, from one level, they would be very happy if nothing ever changed and they never had to respond. On the other hand, I think they realize that part of what the schools have to do is respond to growth in the community. And sometimes it's awkward, and it is awkward, when people start having to rezonate from schools. And I can see that this is, this is a stone's throw from Blackman High School. I'm very much aware of how close it is, and that would be very awkward for someone who can almost see the school, not to be able to have the children go to it in favor of one further away. But they don't come to me and ask me about school zones, and I usually just give them the Blackman Landing's map for this area and say, this is what we're doing, and please, please be aware of it.
Any other questions from members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Ailot, how far is it to the new Fortress-John Rice intersection? Is it a half a mile?
It is right at a half a mile, maybe a little bit less.
So, so really, a lot of the driving of the development in this area is the proximity to the interstate, proximity to Medical Center Boulevard, and the reworking of Fortress Boulevard?
I would say that combined with the availability of sanitary sewer on the property.
That's really what drives everything.
Road access and available water and available sanitary sewer and available land are the four ingredients for development.
Any additional comments? If there are none, what are the wishes of this commission?
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that we've, we've certainly studied it a lot and studied it since 1998, and change is never easy whenever it comes, but I do feel like that the big picture is that this would be a correct zoning for this property, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion is made to recommend approval to the City Council. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
I'll indicate by saying aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Have won no vote. The motion passes. Move on to the, now, let me remind you folks, the ones that came in to spoke, this process will be repeated at the City Council level, so you'll have an opportunity to talk to the City Council as well. The next, our public hearing pertains an annexation request for approximately 90.37 acres along John Bragg Highway, Whitestone Property LLC, and Mr. Marshall Lyon are the applicants. Ms. Ely?
Thank you, sir. Our third public hearing this evening is to consider annexing property located along John Bragg Highway or Highway 70S. This property is located south of John Bragg Highway and does include approximately, let's see, here we go, it does include approximately 2,503 linear feet of state highway, which is about 14.55 acres. The subject area also includes two parcels, and those are identified as orange on the map, and have the label Whitestone and Lyon on them as the area which has requested annexation. Those two parcels are approximately 60.62 acres. These properties are not directly contiguous with current city limits, so the additional study area included in this annexation study is the area shaded orange and has the label Dill on it, representing the property owner. And that orange area is about 15.2 acres, so including the right-of-way, which is approximately 14.55 acres, the Dill property, which is approximately 15.2 acres, and the requested area, the study area comprises a total of 90.37 acres. The property owners have an interest in developing this property and in having it being served by city services, and as such, would need to request annexation in the city and be approved to be annexed before receiving the city services. The properties are contiguous with current city limits, including this additional study area, to the west, and that is to property which is currently developed as a Walmart Supercenter on South Rutherford Boulevard, I think affectionately known as those of us who live here as the new Walmart. It is also continues with state highway, which is a limited-access highway.
Limited.
The, yeah, it may not be the newest, but it appears that all city services will be available to serve these properties immediately upon effective date of annexation, with the exclusion of sanitary sewer. Sewer, as defined by our Murfreesboro Water Sewer Department, is not available to the properties, and that means that it's not located on or within 250 feet of the subject area, and therefore is not available upon annexation. The property owners are aware of the situation, and they're aware of that lack of sewer availability, and they have been communicating with our city's administration department and communicating with our water and sewer department, looking at the possibility of amending the city's regulations to possibly allow this property to develop using a step system or some other acceptable means of sanitary waste disposal. That hasn't been outlined, and I don't think that would be something they would move forward with until they have a clear development plan. And speaking of development, the next public hearing will be to consider changing the zoning for these properties, and this public hearing does not pertain to the zoning of the properties, but just to the annexation of the 90.37 acres. I'm not sure if Mr. Ailot wants to talk a little further about the sewer now, or maybe just answer questions that you have later. I think he's indicated questions is the way it wants to go. But you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation about the annexation of these properties. If there are any questions about the annexation or planning services, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. I know representatives are in the audience this evening, but they have not indicated to me whether they have a presentation, but I do know if you have questions, they are available as well.
Okay, pertaining to the annexation request, does the applicant have anything they'd like to say before we help with the public hearing?
My name is Kevin Gunther with Huddleston Steel, and we will be here to answer any questions for both the annexation and the rezoning process. I believe the staff has conducted a very thorough research of the, of the subject, and we'll be simply here to answer questions as they arise.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gunther. Okay, that being said, I will open the public hearing for the annexation request. Anybody that'd like to speak, please come to the microphone.
Hello, good evening. I'm Mandy Burns. I live at 308 and 1/2 Double Springs Road. My property is that small, little, tiny square there, and as you can see, you know, I've worked really hard on my home, and I'm really, you know, against the annexation and the rezoning of this property. I think I speak for everyone in the neighborhood that we do not want or need an apartment complex, you know, disrupting our peaceful and safe neighborhood. There are over 9,000 apartments, equalling 19 complexes, within two-mile radius of MTSU. There is currently a new complex being built on Rutherford that backs up to this property. They've actually rerouted some little swamp area back there, and it looks as though they're dumping wastewater there now. There's also two grave sites back there dating the Civil War, and my neighbor is currently going to request his property across the street be rezoned agricultural, so I really don't see a good balance between this proposal. I will hope you will really, I'd appreciate you considering my request to not grant this annexation and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Anybody else? Close the public hearing.
Mr. Lyon, question, Mr. Ailot? The, looking at the line track, there's a white square that's at the top corner. Is that where Ms. Burns lives?
That's what I should point out, yes.
Okay, that's, I will make sure. It looks like that the edge of the property goes between her and back over to the other property line. Is that, is that right?
Right away.
Okay, that makes sense.
I did speak with Ms. Burns' boyfriend this week. She called asking, or he called asking questions for her, and he did indicate to me that there's some shared access that goes across the slot and maybe to Double Springs Drive, and had a question about whether we would allow these properties to have access through their parcel to get to Double Springs Road, and I assured him that's not something that we would be in favor of, particularly because of the subsanar conditions of the road, and we wouldn't want to funnel that much traffic onto a road like that. We fully anticipate any kind of future development not having access through their front yard, and so, he did ask me that on telephone conversation, and, and he brought it up, so I just wanted to point out that that was something that we discussed, and that's certainly not the type of development we would approve, and it's, it's not what the developers have asked for either.
Okay. Mr. Ailot, do you have anything?
This is a part of our community that has some limitations in terms of sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer is not available because, basically, the sanitary sewer plant for the city is in the northwest corner, and this is on the very east side of the city. The surface drains, drains into basically a sinkhole system. It does not drain into a water course like Sinking Creek or Stones River. The ability to get sanitary sewer in this area is going to be very costly, very long time in coming. Nonetheless, the developers or the owners have development intentions. I've been speaking with the Lyons family for, for many, many years, and with the Dill family for many, many years as well, since the construction of Rutherford Boulevard. The Dill family were able to sell a portion of their property, and it was able to sewer because it doesn't drain into the Double Springs system. This property back here is a little bit different. The Lyons property is teaming up with the Whitestone property. Basically, Mr. Elliott and his partners are, have both of them, and would be looking to develop onto the John Bragg Highway. Their avowed intentions would be for multifamily for the southern portion with commercial on the front, the frontage along the John Bragg Highway. They're very much aware of the sewer limitations, they're looking for a step system as a possibility, and there have been lengthy and numerous discussions with myself, Mr. Ives, Mr. Gore with the Water and Sewer Department, his predecessor, Mr. Kirchner at the Water and Sewer Department, about something besides sanitary sewer for this property. And that's, that's where we wound up. The step system seems to be a, a good technology at this point. It's proven itself in Rutherford County, and it appears that this property may benefit from it if they can find an accessible location. That's really the main holdup with the, or the main issue with the annexation. Basically, we're in a position to be able to provide services to this property upon its annexation, even with the avowed development plan that we're going to discuss next with the zoning. The, the question will be, you know, where they're going to find a step system, a soil site, and that's part of what they're going to be challenged to do on property they own or are able to manage, and will meet the requirements of either the city or Consolidated Utility District, if Consolidated Utility District is involved in the management of it. All other services, we can provide immediately upon the annexation.
Is there any dwellings on any of this?
No, there are no dwellings on this property that I'm aware of, not, certainly not in the area that we're looking to annex. I would point out, prior to the construction of the John Bragg Highway, the Whitestone property was the middle of a grain field.
What's in the gist of a step system?
A step system is like a, in many respects, like a giant septic tank and field area. Basically, there's a community, a spray area where the fluid that's treated is sprayed. It's basically the water, it's sprayed onto the land. Everybody has their own septic tank, and it pumps it out to a community system.
Central point.
Yep.
Okay. I'll answer a question.
Just a quick question, just in general, for either Ms. Ely or Mr. Ailot. The property to the south of what we're looking at, that's, you know, just white on our maps right now, is it remainder property of Dill and Lyon?
Yes, ma'am. The area that is south of the area that is purple, that's labeled Dill, is owned by the Dill family, the same ones who own that property. The property that is immediately adjacent to the, to the left of the Lyon property and southward, all the way off of the tract, there's about 200 acres in that tract, it's owned by the Lyon family.
So that's what I'm wondering. It goes on down, and they have access to those properties from some other area? Are we land-locking these properties?
Actually, they don't have good access to their property. They have access on the Double Springs Road over here on this corner, and they now have access by way of the Aspen Heights, you may recall the Aspen Heights Apartments. They have secured a right-of-way through that property that they own now as a, as a right-of-way for them to build a road. You may recall, when we discussed that site plan, there's a lot of discussion about a road that was along their north side. That's how big that tract is, it extends all the way down to Aspen Heights.
So that, that's not a problem, leaving those areas without access? Or I guess maybe they could get access off of these developed properties?
Part, part of what I'm trying to promote with them and have been working towards with the, the owners is to work towards a, a good transportation plan. Part of the keys to really tapping into this property in a, in a way that's going to work properly is good access. The first thing that comes into play is how we're going to manage the traffic, and part of how we're going to manage the traffic is where the intersections will be onto Rutherford and to John Bragg Highway. We want those to be at places that can be signalized. There are only limited numbers of places that can be signalized, so one of our challenges is to see a location where the state will permit signalization on John Bragg Highway to see a street come off of it. I want that to be basically a, more of a collector-type street or an arterial-type street. Likewise, off of Rutherford Boulevard, there are limited places for signalization on Rutherford. We want those to be streets, and they would intersect with the street coming off John Bragg. I've looked at several different iterations of how they could come around, and it looks like they are beginning to move towards developing a plan that will, will do that. Part of my desire is to make sure that nobody is left out. I don't want the, I don't want the Whitestone and Lyon property to get the only access that the state will approve. I want something that can be shared and work well, and it looks like it can be done. I know Mr. Huddleston, Mr. Bill Huddleston, has met with me about three times to look at different versions of that. He's not, he's had a family illness tonight, and Mr. Gunther may not be quite up to speed with it as he is. What would happen if we were to annex this property and then zone it? The next step would be to see a master plan brought in. The master plan will begin to put into place the, the infrastructure commitments.
Anything else, Ms. Jones?
No, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'm ready for a motion. If not, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with the close proximity of the MTSU and the Walmart and the five-lane highway and four-lane highway in this, the, seems like a very reasonable request, so I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is made. Seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We'll move on to the next public hearing. That is a zoning application for the same properties, approximately 20.86 acres to be zoned commercial highway and approximately 39.76 acres to be zoned RM16 simultaneous with annexation along John Bragg Highway, Whitestone Property LLC, and Mr. Marshall Lyon or the applicants. Ms. Eli?
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is to consider changing the zone simultaneous with the annexation of two areas which you just considered for annexation and have recommended annexation. The first is for the property located closest to John Bragg Highway. It's the area that's shaded orange on your maps, and that property is approximately 20.86 acres, and the request is to zone that property CH, Commercial Highway District, simultaneous with its annexation. The second part of the request is to change the zone of the area shaded purple from, or to zone it RM16 simultaneous with its annexation, and that RM16 zone is multifamily residential district. The, the applicants believe that these properties are well-suited for the commercial development along the state highway, and that the remainder of the area is well-suited for a multifamily development that would in part support the university community because of its close proximity to MTSU. Under the proposed zoning and considering the acreage of 39.76 acres with 16 dwelling units per acre as permitted by the proposed zoning, it would be possible to develop approximately 636 multifamily dwelling units on the area shaded purple. However, there are some limitations in the property which we discussed with the annexation, the largest being the sewer capacity that's available. We know that this property is limited in capacity. Also, further study of the property shows that there are some power line easements that run along the property, and buildings will not be able to be placed under those power lines, although parking areas might be able to be placed there. And the property would also have to manage its stormwater considerations, and we did hear testimony of that this water is, or this area is sensitive, and so of course they would have to accommodate any of their stormwater requirements. It's not likely that that 636 dwelling unit could be achieved for this property. The property owners or the proposed developers have a desire to have the multifamily portion of the property developed similar to the Aspen Heights project that's located to the south along South Rutherford Boulevard. That project's currently under construction, and you probably haven't been able to see the finished product, but you were able to review those plans, and that type of development, I think they call it like cottage style, but it, it's sort of giving students or whomever decides to live there, a feeling of living in a single-family house, although it's clearly multifamily, and it would only be permitted in our multifamily zones. And so that's what they are anticipating for this property. And that type of development had, the Aspen Heights had around six dwelling units per acre because of the sanitary sewer limitations on the Aspen Heights project, as well as drainage sensitivity. Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing prior to making a new recommendation about these zoning changes simultaneous with the annexation. If you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. Mr. Gunther is in the audience and represents the applicants. If you have questions from him, he'll be glad to answer them as well.
Any questions before we open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name is Keith Banks. I live at 308 and a half, Double Springs Road. As far as the step system goes, how would that work back there? My question is, the groundwater back there comes real close to the surface of the ground, even in the summertime. I mean, there're crawdad mounds everywhere back there. And another question, it was discussed before, how big of a buffer would there be from the property, our property line, to where the buildings would be, actually? That's all I have.
Anybody else? Close the public hearing. Ms. Delot, a couple of questions.
With regards to a step system, the requirements that the state and the Health Department require for a step system include a suitable soil site. The soil has to have certain characteristics that will allow for percolation, just like, just like a septic system on, on your own property. It has to be of adequate size to have the, to carry the load that would be projected to carry. The problem would be that the develop, well, the opportunity depend, or problem depends upon how you look at it, but the developer would have the responsibility of finding a soil that would have the characteristics that would be approved. They may not be on the site. They may be off the site. They may be on soil that's on, on the adjacent parcel. They, so because they can pump the wastewater, it can be pumped, it doesn't have to flow by gravity. So it's going to be on them to find something that meets their requirements. I think there's an awareness that this soil itself does not have the qualities they're looking for, because they want to get this property zoned, because they want to put their buildings on this property. They think that they can find a site elsewhere. With regards to the buffer, this would be a type C buffer, that's a, Ms. Eli, help me, that's a 12-foot buffer. That's a minimum requirement, and it would be planted with shade, not shade trees, but evergreens and deciduous trees to create a, a massive vegetation to help decrease the amount of visibility through there.
I have another question.
I'm sorry, sir. If you'll see him after the meeting, he'll be glad to answer it for you, please. Any other questions from Ms. Delot or comments from the Planning Commission?
Just as a general comment, at site plan review, the things that are worked out are locations of the buildings, locations of the parking lots, streetlights, headlights shining into adjacent properties. Those things are looked at at site plan, so some of the questions that we can't answer right this minute are addressed specifically at that time. Hope that helps you a little bit.
If there's no more questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, I'll make a motion that we approve this request.
Second. Motion is made to recommend approval of the City Council. Seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next public hearing, if you'll bear with me on this, because it's quite detailed, the zoning application for approximately .69 acres to be rezoned from commercial fringe to commercial highway, approximately .20 acres to be rezoned from Office General to commercial highway, approximately 20.03 acres to be rezoned from PCD to commercial highway, approximately .13 acres to be rezoned from PRD to commercial highway, approximately 1.58 acres to be rezoned from PCD to Office General, and approximately .39 acres to be rezoned from PRD to Office General along Salem Highway at Kason Lane, LP Mortgage is the applicant. Ms. Eli?
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is to consider changing the zone for properties located south of Highway 99 or New Salem Highway and located along Kason Lane and just north of Asher's Forks Drive. The properties which are requesting a zoning change are in two parts. The first is to request properties that are located along Kason Lane and New Salem Highway to CH or Highway Commercial District. Those properties are currently zoned Commercial Fringe District, Office General District, Planned Commercial District, and Planned Residential District, and those are the properties that are being requested to be zoned CH or Highway Commercial District. There's also some, a smaller portion of the property, which is little less than two acres, or actually around about two acres, which is currently zoned Planned Commercial District, Planned Residential District, and the request is to change that to OG or Office General District. The subject property is located along south side of Salem Highway, as I mentioned, east of Kason Lane. The property was zoned, the PCD portions of the property were zoned as such in 2008 for the development of a commercial center. Since that time, we've seen some changes in not only our community but nationwide, and as a result of the economic recession, the viability of the plan for, the PCD plan for that property has eroded, and the developer of the Three Rivers is no longer involved in this property and has left, and as such, the new owners are requesting the property be zoned CH to allow the property to be more marketable, and that the plan as it is currently approved is no longer, as they believe, appropriate for the property. All of the property north of the creek is proposed to be zoned CH, so there is a creek that separates the property. All of the property south of the creek is proposed to be zoned OG, General Office District Residential, and OG would allow a limited number of uses, not as many as the CH District. CH would allow those types of uses that you generally see along a commercial corridor along a state highway, and OG would limit those types of uses to more office and less intensive type commercial uses. Included with the request are several small odd parcels, and I think that's why it was so long and difficult to say, because that you can see from the map, the portions that are not zoned for PCD are small, and they're separated with that heavy dashed line, however we needed to point them out to you. So this will clean up the zoning line, it will follow current rights of way, and it will be clear with the properties zoned. And also, it'll be zoned a bulk zone, which seems to have more viability in today's market. The Planning, the Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding the zoning change for these properties. If you have any questions, again, I'll be glad to answer them at a time of your choosing. And I'm not sure if there's an applicant or a representative of the applicant, okay, Mr. Harney is here, and Mr. Matt Taylor, and Mr. Matt Taylor usually does have a presentation prepared, so I'll go ahead and invite him to the lectern to introduce the property. If you have any questions, he'll be available as well.
I don't have any fancy presentation. Ms. Eli stole my speech verbatim, so, I think Mr. Harney are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions or comments before we open the public hearing? If none, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name is Ross Bradley. I represent the owners of Three Rivers Assisted Living, and Mr. Harney had approached us about this development, and we are in favor of supporting it. We feel like it will continue the growth in Three, in the Three Rivers development, and we feel like it'll be an asset to our assisted living community that's already there. So we, we would support it.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Anybody else? Seeing no more, nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing.
I think Ms. Horn, Mr. Key, she was sitting there, and she, she was going to speak, I know she was going to speak.
I'll reopen it for you. You're so short, I couldn't see you behind that podium.
I was hiding because I didn't want to fight with Mr. [inaudible].
Well, go right ahead, Miss Ma. We'll reopen it for you.
I'm Betty Jackson Horn. I live on Highway 99, right across from this PCD. I've lived there for 50, 52, yeah, 52 years, built the house in a car pasture. And Highway 99 is, again, we get things going before we do the infrastructure. Highway 99 is a nightmare. I've heard from people that have to drive it, it is a state highway. And somehow to put that little commercial or whatever, that space in there, to put it up like I have heard, if it's zoned commercial or PCD or whatever that, I don't know all these symbols, it, we could have anything from a used car lot to a tattoo, or, excuse me, whatever. Anyway, they, this has been brought up so many times, and I know Mr. Young was one that went to see, and I know we can't help it about Mr. Van Schiffer, but this was going to be looked at every inch of the way. That was back in whatever year I've lost. But right across, I know, I'm selfish, for, I own about three and a half acres there, and, but to look out every night and to see a big commercial thing, we've got too many little grocery stores and whatever. We've already got Publix up the road from Kason Lane, and we've got the big Krogers and on and on. It just, why go out here and mess up, it's the one road, I'm proud to say, leading out of a city of Murfreesboro that has anything to show of, as far as scenic or whatever. And I just don't see keeping on putting little mom and pop shoppings, I don't care, along that stretch. And yes, it is in front of Three, Three Rivers, Creekside, Creekside, Assisted Living. I'm surprised that they haven't made some remark, Door Rivers did, because if they want to make an Adams Place, which they would like to do, I don't think they're going to appreciate a used car lot or a, anyway, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to say anything because I didn't have my ducks in order. I say it all, Mr. Adelot, and I'm just representing, let's say they're just, oh, you know, Smiths, now their property, they've done so much, it floods the front yard, and they put in a big drain system, and they're going to eventually maybe do something, they haven't paid them yet. And anyway, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Anybody else before I close the public hearing again? Nobody? Close the public hearing. What are the wishes to this commission? If there's no other comments or questions, we're ready for a motion.
May I address Ms.?
Yes, ma'am, you can, yes, sir.
This already is on commercial now. It's planned commercial development, and what, what they're doing is they're changing it to commercial highway, and they're cleaning up a lot of odd lot lines which make comprehensive development harder to do. So instead of having a bunch of little bitty commercial areas, they're encompassing it into a larger one which will make a better development. But it's already zoned commercial, planned commercial development. So they can do a lot of things commercial with it today if, if they choose, if the developers choose to do that. I really think this will make it a better commercial site with, with better access and better drainage and better landscaping, and I think it will help you instead of hurt you. Another thing I might point out is the state has a, we are working on getting that road finished, worked on, the five-lane, and all the way out to Kason Lane and St. Andrews.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Hudson, can you tell me a date? I, I don't know the date.
Yes, for Phase One, Ms. Adelot, it's in the, on the three-year, three-year horizon with the Department of Transportation. And Phase One runs from Highway 96, Old Fort Parkway, to Kason Lane. Department of Transportation uses a pay-as-you-go method. Funding has not been verified on that project, although it is on the horizon. We don't, we won't have a specific date until T.D.O. is sure they've got the money to spend, which usually happens about a year before the project's ready to go to bid. So best guess is a three-year, three-year horizon for the project to be advertised for bid.
So Mr. Hudson, that's scheduled to be, how many lanes?
Five-lane, current section.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston. Mr. Young, very eloquently put.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Seconded motion. Motion is made. Seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All opposed. Motion carries. Next public hearing is a PRD amendment for approximately 1.3 acres within the Winslow Park PRD to reduce the number of units. J. Wyatt Homes LLC is the applicant. Ms. Ely?
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is to consider amending the Planned Residential District zone for property identified as Winslow Park in the Berkshire subdivision. This property was zoned PRD in a specific program book, was submitted and approved by both the Planning Commission and City Council. If there is a major change to that plan, it requires legislative action, which means it needs to go back through the zoning process and get your approval in both in the City Council as well. The owner or the applicant owns two lots in this subdivision that are identified as the orange lots on the map that you have, with this PRD being the hatched area. The applicant wants to amend the Planned Residential District packet so that the property will, they can change the type of development from the attached product, which is currently approved for, to single-family houses that are detached. The applicant proposes to develop alley-loaded homes similar to the other houses within this development rather than that five-unit attached structure that was approved as part of the PRD zoning for this property. We have received communication from the Homeowner Association, which does support this amendment to the PRD. I don't know if there's somebody in the audience representing the applicant, but we'll be glad to answer questions that you may have. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation, City Council.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I don't have any formal presentation, but Mr. Wyatt would just like to continue what's been done in the front part. I think he's had success recently out there with a desire for this product. I did have roughly 10 phone calls from residents after the mailers went out. I think all of them, after they, after I explained to them what we wanted to do, were in support of this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions or comments from the Planning Commission before we open the public hearing? I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Excuse me. Seeing no one come forward, Ms. Horn, you're not getting up, are you? Okay. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. There's no comments or questions, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The final public hearing of the evening is an annexation request for approximately 1.81 acres at 841 Osborne Lane. Mr. Clint Metters is the applicant. Ms. Ely?
Thank you, sir. Our final public hearing is to consider annexing property located along the north side of Osborne Lane and is addressed as 841 Osborne Lane. This annexation does include right-of-way along Osborne Lane, although it's not shown on the map that you have in your packet, it does include right-of-way. As a matter of fact, we, I re-advertised this in the paper to ensure that it was clear that right-of-way was being included in this annexation study. The owner of this property recently purchased the property and wants to build a single-family house. After investigating the site, it was discovered that the field area, which he would normally use for the septic tank, had been compromised due to the placement of film in the property, and that remediation would be very expensive to make it suitable for using a septic tank system. The property is currently contiguous with current city limits, is within our urban growth boundary, and would be relatively easy for the city to annex the property. So, he's, rather than spending money on that costly remediation, has a desire to tap into the city sewer and utilize the other services that we provide as a city resident, so he's asking for you to consider annexing the property. All sewer, all services are available to this property immediately upon the annexation becoming effective, and as a matter of fact, the county has approved the property owner, Mr. Metters, to obtain permits through the city with the caveat that the annexation process is finalized. I mentioned earlier that this would be an easy property to annex, it doesn't affect any other properties, is contiguous with current city limits, can receive all city services upon becoming effective, and is located within the urban growth boundary. If you have any questions about the annexation or the plan of services, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing, but you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding the annexation, City Council.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see anybody coming forward to make a presentation to the commission, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda this evening. We'll move on to new business. We have one item under new business today. That is the zoning application for approximately 6.68 acres to be rezoned from RS15 to Commercial Highway at 2315 Joby Jackson Parkway. Mrs. Linda Sneed on behalf of Stones River Church is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman Lam. The subject property is located along the north side of Joby Jackson Parkway. It's adjacent to the Sunset Retreat Planned Residential Development. The property is developed with a church, is one of the first properties that developed on the Joby Jackson Parkway after its construction. The church is a little bit unusual in that they want to have some opportunities to have some businesses operate out of their church that cannot be approved by the Board of Zoned Appeals as special use permits. For instance, Ms. Sneed and the congregation want to operate a restaurant from the church. They've got parking, they've got a kitchen, they've got what it takes, but they don't have the proper zoning. The property is immediately adjacent to the land that is zoned Commercial Highway. They have requested their property be zoned Commercial Highway. They'll also allow them to do other semi-outreach like daycare, adult daycare, as part of the Commercial Highway zoning without having to come back to the Board of Zoned Appeals. Also, in the future, if they want to do additions, they would basically just come through the site plan review process and not have to come to the Board of Zoned Appeals. This needs to be scheduled for a public hearing. The next public hearing date would be May 1st. We have one public hearing scheduled for that night already.
I would hate to make these folks wait all night for that public hearing, because that's going to be a rather lengthy public hearing, I presume. Can we put this first on the agenda?
If that's your desire, we'll do that.
Well, I just think it's the right thing to do.
Right thing to do, you're right.
I mean, it would be, I don't know what time we'll be through. I'll bring my nodos. Mr. Young, do you have a motion?
Public hearing made first.
Thank you.
And put this adjacent item as first in public hearings, please.
Second then.
Well, we'll, we will review that at our 17th, our April 17th meeting, because I expect we're going to have some other items in new business if you all may want.
Motion is made, and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the new business. Staff reports and other business, Ms. Aitlott.
I have none.
In that case, we stand adjourned.